Why are we spending $144,000 with AE2S Nexus? Seriously, how much must taxes increase to pay for all these secret agreements? And what is the city attorney doing? It appears he is looking out for administrators, not the best interests of the city. He recommended separation agreements for directors who quit after proving incompetent for positions they held. Who approved withholding information from commissioners? Who approved the firing of innocent employees as a cover-up? Who approved the secret agreement with CARGIL? What other secret agreements and cover-ups has he recommended? Transparency, accountability, and professionalism, as all citizens and employees ask for, but we're certainly not getting it. Good luck straightening this all out. We fear there's more yet to be uncovered. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Paul Bishop in the room? He had requested some time on public comment. Mr. Paul Bishop?
Just correspondence was said.
All right. That's all you have, Emily, is these, the three individuals? All right, very good. We're going to close the public comment portion of this, and we'll start the city commission meeting at 5:30. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the West Fargo City Commission meeting for June 5th, 2023. We are honored this evening to have Josh Wells and his scout troop, Troop Number 246, with us this evening. With that being said, I would ask Chief Otterness, Chief Fuller, and Deputy Chief Dallas Brecker, Assistant Fire Chief, to come up over here in front and join the boys in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Garrett's going to start it all out for us. Garrett, up here.
We'll go this way. Garrett, your pleasure.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. They're working, or get some badges. And to Troop 246, I'd note that Commissioner Mandy George is also with us via Zoom this evening. She's traveling on business, so, but Commissioner George is here with us also. Commissioners, the first order of business is to approve the order of the agenda that has been distributed.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Anderson moves. Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the order of the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business, Item D is the approval of the minutes. They're on pages three through six in your packet. They have been distributed.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of May 15, 2023, pages three through six as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is the building permits. The report has been distributed, is on pages seven through 10 in the packet. Commissioners, do you have any questions, suggestions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits as distributed, pages seven through 10 in the packet. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is the consent agenda. We have Items A through O, going on pages 11 through 65 on the packet.
Make motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner George seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Items, again, A through O, zero, O, excuse me, as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one is to approve a subdivision development agreement and a final plat of Brooks Harbor 10th Edition. We're going to call on Aaron Nelson, our Planning Director for the City of West Fargo. It is on pages 66 through 83 in the packet. Good evening, Mr. Nelson.
Good evening, President Dardis and Commissioners. So, I'll open the item here. Item one is a request for subdivision titled Brooks Harbor 10th Edition. The request before you tonight is to approve the final plat of the subdivision, along with the associated subdivision development agreement, both of which documents are included in your meeting packet. Subject property is located at 455 24th Avenue West. Just pulling open a map on the screen here. This property is located along the west side of Cheyenne Street between 24th and 26th Avenues. The purpose of the subdivision is to split an existing lot into two new lots for future commercial development. Subdivision will also formally dedicate as public right-of-way a narrow strip of land on the east side of the subject property that was previously purchased by the city for purposes of Cheyenne Street. Subdivision plat includes an easement for purposes of establishing a private drive along the shared lot line, which is just right in the middle of the block here, providing access to both properties, providing ingress and egress from the north and the south. Subdivision development agreement has been drafted to accompany the plat in order to ensure long-term maintenance of that private drive, which is intended to be completely private. The proposed subdivision was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular meeting of March 7th, 2023. And again, the recommendation, or the recommended action for you tonight is to approve the final plat, as well as the associated subdivision development agreement. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Questions? Commissioners? Anyone?
Make motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the subdivision development agreement and final plat of Brooks Harbor's 10th Edition as presented by Mr. Nelson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir. Second reading of ordinance number 1224 through 1231. These are code amendments to our building codes. Mr. Mark House, Inspections Administrator, it is on pages 84 through 153 in the packet. Good evening, Mr. House. Welcome.
I'm just here for that second reading, to revert that question. You have Mr. Simmons on daycare provisions. There's no changes ever made, being made in the building codes regarding them.
All right, thank you, Mr. House. Commissioners, any questions, the gentleman?
Just procedural, do we do it all as one, or do you want each individual one identified?
We serve at your pleasure, Commissioner, whatever your motion would entail.
My motion would be to approve all of them from number one, 1224 through 1231.
Thank you.
Second reading.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance 1224 through 1231, coded amendments to the National Building Code as it applies to the City of West Fargo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three is a city ordinance revision of 107-03, sale of abandoned or unclaimed personal property. We're going to call on Dennis Otterness, Police Chief for the City of West Fargo. It is on pages 154 to 156 in the packet. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you, Commission President Dardis and Commissioners. Tonight I've got a request for approval for a minor change to one of our city ordinances that deals with abandoned or unclaimed personal property. And just by way of background, this came up several weeks ago. As you're aware, the police department has been going through a comprehensive policy and procedure manual overhaul that started back in January. And we got to the point where we started to address issues with our property room and property and evidence custodian and some of the procedures for dealing with property within that property room that we come in contact with. So what we did, what I did is worked with our city attorney, Mr. Shockley, to make sure that our, the changes to our city ordinance bring us in line with North Dakota Century Code, to make sure that when we're dealing with abandoned or found property, that we've got in our property room that when we go to dispose of that, that we're doing that in accordance, in accordance with state law and that our city ordinance is in, basically in line with that. So, so the, it's some very minor changes to the ordinance. I'll pull that up for you here. We'll go through that real quick. It's the, basically the portions that are underlined, and this is ordinance number 1232, and it falls under Section 1.0703 of our city ordinances. And basically what this is asking for your approval in first reading is when dealing, we're not, we're not talking about US currency that's found. We've got procedure already established that allows us, if somebody turns in found currency, that our first attempt is to obviously hold that for an appropriate amount of time, and then that gets turned back to the finder if they so choose, if they want to claim that. So this ordinance change excludes currency or other valuables under Section 1. It's been abandoned or left unclaimed upon the streets, alleys, or other public ways of the city for a period exceeding 10 days. And after holding onto such property for a period of not less than 60 days, the city auditor or the chief of police may dispose of or sell the same at a public sale after a notice is published in the official newspaper of the city at least 10 days before the sale. The city auditor or chief of police may exercise their discretion as to the method of sale. And the change to the ordinance basically is when personal property, including precious metals, stamps, stones, gems, securities, art objects, antiques, or other valuables, are no longer required as evidence and remain abandoned or unclaimed after three years, so we have to hold on to this property for three years. The property is presumed to be abandoned or unclaimed and shall be turned over to the Unclaimed Property Division of the North Dakota Department of Land Trust, or Trust Lands, I'm sorry. And so that really is the, that really is the entire ordinance, as I worked on it with, again, our city attorney, just making sure that really the main change is that anything that's of value, that falls under one of these, one of these categories, the precious metal stamp stones, has to be turned over to the State Trust Lands rather than, rather than disposed of, sold, or anything that might come back in terms of general fund into the police department or the city. So, other than that, it's largely left unchanged as it relates to impounded or abandoned motor vehicles, which is in Section 2 below that. So our policy and procedure will mirror the city ordinance, which now accurately mirrors Century Code. So with that, I have nothing additional unless you have questions.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for the Chief?
Make motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the city ordinance revision of 1-07-03, the sale of abandoned or unclaimed personal property. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number four this evening on our regular agenda is to adopt the 2023 through 2028, a five-year plan for the Fire Department Strategic Plan. Presenting this evening is Dan Fuller, Fire Chief for the City of West Fargo. It is on pages 157 to 212 in your packet. Good evening, Chief.
Good afternoon, Commission President Dardis, members of the Commission. Tonight you have before you a request to adopt the 2023 through 2028- the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight Strategic Plan for the West Fargo Fire Department. Just briefly to go over the plan and the reason we, reason we have the plan. This is our third plan as we work through as a department since twenty fifteen. It outlines the growth that we're going to need to achieve within the next five years to meet our benchmark according to what our data shows. That's response time, station reliability, and I'll talk about some of that here in a minute. One of the big reasons we're doing this is to, you know, we do expend a lot of funds. So we are looking at making sure that we are, we're checking all the boxes and the accountability towards public trust, accountability, ethical tone, engagement, performance, all those things, making sure that the, you know, building what we can with the community. So they know when we come forward and ask for something that, that it's been researched, data-driven, and it is contained within a plan. But the one thing to point out is this plan is not necessarily committing any funds or any projects at this time. It's to put this on the radar. We do have some internal plans for long-term facilities and long-term staffing that's supported by this plan. And we also turn this plan into the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, along with our Standards of Cover document and our Fire Service Self-Assessment Manual, and that will occur within the next eighteen months for us to achieve national accreditation. Our leadership team here included all of our deputy chiefs, our emergency manager and myself. I'm sorry, that was our leadership team. Our accreditation team is, our manager is Deputy Chief Tom Clark. And then on that team also is Deputy Chief Kendall Frost, Battalion Chief Jason Caraview, and Community Risk Reduction Officer Travis Olson. This year, as we worked through our strategic plan, we did change some things. We did apply work plan items to each one of our strategic goals or commitments to the community. Critical services that affect critical city functions are essential to health, welfare, and public safety, and they also may be mandated, and they are always important. Strategic work plans, these are the plans that build upon each other for the next five years, identify through the strategic planning process, and then timely opportunities, and these are nice-to-have, easy wins that are only considered after screening and evaluating the impact on critical services and strategic services. But there are things that might be important now. We use this to, in addition to the strategic plan, to go through our annual budgeting process to make sure that things that we are requesting within our budget actually fit one of these three items on the screen and that we actually have a matrix we work through to make sure that we are, when we ask for things out of budget, that it's meeting a level of scrutiny that we put on ourselves at the Fire Department before we bring it to the commission. We do refresh, refresh this plan every year, and we use it within our budget process. And as the budget gets released, everyone will start seeing exactly what I'm talking about and how that has actually worked into this year's programmatic budget for the Fire Department. But we go through each quarter here, first, second, third, fourth, and refreshing the plan, then working into the budget, and then making sure we're achieving the things that we said we were going to in the last budget. This is the decision matrix that we included in the plan this year, and it's, I apologize, it's a big slide, and you're not going to be able to see it all on the screen. But really, it begins with a budget item and whether or not that is actually called out within the plan, yes or no. And then we go down to is, what's the links to the strategic plan? If things aren't called out in the strategic plan and we're asking for them in a budget format, we actually go forward and do the same thing to make sure that what the link is to the strategic plan. And if there is no link and if it's not a timely opportunity and we're going to have to give something else up, we're just not going to pursue it. And that's, that is why that's on there. Sections of the plan. We have the Fire Department and the community, community holder stake, community stakeholder feedback, internal stakeholder feedback, and then finally, our commitments to the community. We went through our history, and we do this exercise every year because in order to understand where we're heading, we need to understand where we came from. And we keep adding paragraphs and paragraphs and pages to this as we're moving forward. It is, it is nice to look at the benchmarks that we have achieved in the last couple of years. We did have a community holder, stakeholder process. We gathered seventeen community stakeholders here at City Hall. They received a brief explanation of our standards of cover and the risk assessment. They were asked to rank, priority rank our services, and then also identify what we're doing well and where we can improve. And we put that information in the actual strategic plan. The written comments are in there, the rankings are in there to support our decisions that we've made. The internal stakeholder process, we gathered twenty-five internal stakeholders from the Fire Department. We went through a mission statement exercise and rewrote our mission statement. And then we went through a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges exercise designed to identify exactly what it says, where our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and challenges lie. And we use that to set our commitments to our community. Our mission statement here is what we do, why we do it, and who we do it for. And we did change that this year, and that is the new mission statement that we've put forward. The commitment to the community, number one, is, and I'll just briefly touch on this, the first commitment to the community, it's an overarching. It used to be considered what our, what our goal would be, to increase the survivability of sudden cardiac arrest, stroke, and trauma, and preventable loss of life in the City of West Fargo. I'm not going to move that. I'm going to leave that right there. I don't want to touch the, the screen with Mandy on it. I don't want to lose her. So, to increase the survivability, and we go through the objectives, one A, one B, one C. Each one of them in there is labeled by their work plan. So blue is critical. Yellow is strategic. Green is timely. Commitment to the community, number two, limit the loss of life and property from fire and natural disasters within the city. The critical objectives are listed there. To note on there is the NFPA seventeen-ten standards for seventeen firefighters on duty at any given time. And then also, to make sure our critical work plan there is a first to reliability of seventy percent or better within planning zones one through four. This is continued. Number two, number three, to actively reduce the number of non-acute emergency calls, increase the quality of life for the residents of the City of West Fargo utilizing the community health model, and that's a project we've been working on in the last year. Twofold on that is to, number one, decrease the number of calls we're going on proactively to be able to manage what we have. And number two is to actually stop those emergencies before they occur. Commitment, number four, is improve workplace safety, mental health, and cancer reduction efforts for the employees of the City of West Fargo Fire Department. There's a few critical work plans on there that we are working through right now. And then we will be working through in the next four years, five years. And then commitment to the community, number five, is to increase the effectiveness of firefighter emergency medical training, discipline, and operational experiences. It's a double-edged sword, cutting down on call volume. We're also not having the operational experience for some of our young staff. So there are some things out there that is, that will help us train up a more competent workforce, give them the ability to work through some very critical situations without having to experience that critical situation firsthand. So we are going to move forward with a workshop, a training group to investigate that and bring forward things through our budget cycle in the next couple of years. But we were actually able and very lucky to tag on to the North Dakota Firefighters Association. They do have a training program utilizing some software for virtual reality, and we're able to get a copy of it and some of the equipment here in the city that we are going to use to train firefighters around the state, but also our own firefighters and work through that so we can figure out how it works. And that is, that is it. There's a lot of pages in there, and I just wanted to keep this extremely brief as we, we move forward with this. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, any questions? Chief, why don't you share with the public what happened a week ago Tuesday with regard to firefighter of the year or who that individual was?
Yep, that was our training chief, Matt Berg, selected as our firefighter of the year. He was honored at the Exchange Club Lunch along with the Police Department Employee of the Year. And Matt will also be honored at our end-of-the-year award ceremony as the firefighter of the year also. He's done some tremendous work for us. Last year, we had well over eight thousand training hours amongst the whole department. The effort will really shine when ISO visits us this year, and we're able to drop an ISO grade because of the, the work that he's done.
Thank you, Chief. How about you tell us about what happened last Fri, a week ago Friday?
Week ago Friday?
Swearing in of five new firefighters.
Yeah, the graduation. And right, you know, it was nine AM in the morning. It threw me off. So, yeah, we did have, we did have five West Fargo firefighters graduate the Joint Fire Academy, along with six from Fargo. And they've already been on shift and within the last couple of days. We, amongst the five, two of them are outside, new hires to the Fire Department that are not, they weren't previous volunteers or paid-on-call firefighters. This shows the growth that we're having, that we're actually going out and recruiting people that weren't, weren't involved in the Fire Department prior to that. And then we are starting a joint fire academy, the, the summer academy here next Monday. And that will graduate in September. And when that is complete, we'll have the staff, the staffing to put the engine on at the new headquarters building and have twenty-four-hour staffing with an engine on this end of town.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
This is an actionable item, Commissioners, to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight Fire Department Strategic Plan.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George seconds. Been moved and seconded to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight Fire Department Strategic Plan as presented this evening. It's on pages one fifty-seven to two twelve in the packet. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number five is project number thirteen forty-two, SA forty, sanitary lift station rehabilitation. Mr. Dan Hanson, the city engineer for the City of West Fargo. Purpose of the discussion this evening to approve the change order number two, pages two thirteen to two seventeen. Mr. Hanson, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. In the packet is change order number two to an existing project that we have going on, project number thirteen forty-two, where we're rehabilitating that lift station. The purpose for this and where this originated was, a few weeks ago, I was notified by Public Works that inside of that lift station, there are, there are five pumps. There's three large pumps and two smaller pumps. And at any given time in a, in a major rain event, we need two of the large pumps pumping. And this is the lift station, again, that pumps all the sewage from West Fargo to Fargo.
Repeat that last statement, please.
Yep, absolutely. This lift station, SA forty, is the lift station that pumps all of West Fargo's sewage to Fargo. So it is the most critical piece of sanitary infrastructure in the City of West Fargo. And there is some redundancy because, as I mentioned, in higher rain events, two large pumps struggle to but do keep up with the amount of flows that we have with the INI, the infiltration that, and inflow that we would have in those major events and spring melt, those type of timings where we do have more flows going through the sanitary system. However, a few weeks ago, there was actually a seal failure in two of the larger pumps. It was a coincidental type of situation. But it really exposed a situation where we had one large pump and we had the two smaller pumps that were in operation. So we did not have two large pumps at that moment. There was only one seal fix kit in the United States. They had to order more. The pumps are actually made in Sweden. These are not pumps and equipment that are easily, easy to get. Again, the, not like the lift station's not designed properly. There's three pumps in there and we need two. So generally, you always have one that you can take out of operation, perform some maintenance on. It was just with this double seal failure that it put us in a position where we, we were under, luckily, it happened during a dry time, but Public Works approached me and asked, would it make sense that we were to bring to the commission and get a quote to purchase an additional pump to have on the shelf? In the event that there is a double failure of two of the large pumps, that we would have one pump on the shelf that we could swap out. The other thing that it would allow us to do is, at all, at any given time, if we want to maintain one of the pumps, we can pull one, put this additional one in there. If Public Works, say there's rain in the forecast or we're in a, in a susceptible time of the year, they would be able to have three pumps in the lift station at all, at all times if we were to pull one pump and maintain it. So. So we did get quotes from the contractor working on the project for a total amount of hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars to purchase an additional large, hundred and, hundred and ten horsepower pump for SA forty that Public Works would be able to keep in the event that they would need it or to be used during maintenance times with the other large pumps. And without entertaining any questions.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Simmons?
I want to thank you, Dan. Is there a larger pump than a hundred and ten out there on the market?
There are larger pumps than that, but they just require different, different electricity to it. And also, the, the force main to Fargo has some design parameters as far as the size of the pumps that we want to have pumping into it. So if, if your question is, you know, would we be able to buy a, one bigger one that could replace two smaller ones? They don't, it's how you set it up on the rails and the, the velocities of the sewage and the pipes. You would need bigger pipes for larger horsepower. But yeah, there are, they do make larger horsepower pumps.
I guess I, I'm only concerned because I'm reading here where it says recently two of the large pumps coincidentally went out at the same time. Those are two hundred and ten horsepower pumps. I mean, should, should we not have, forget about those little thirty-five horsepower ones and just move to the bigger ones?
The thirty-five horsepower pumps that are, are in there right now, those are, those do operate under low-flow conditions to keep, because the larger pumps are a lot more expensive and things like that. So the, the smaller pumps are there for low-flow situations to evacuate the system. The larger pumps are for larger events. So we wouldn't want to get rid of the smaller ones or else our larger ones would always be in operation.
So you feel confident that this one is enough, then?
Yeah, there's, I feel there's already redundancy in the pumps that we have in the lift station. This provides a further factor of safety where we would have to have, even in the event that we have two of our three pumps go out, we would have one to put in there to still have two large pumps. So.
Well, the way I'm looking at this, we cannot have these go out. We're in a lot of trouble, especially as Commissioners as well.
That's why I had Mr. Hanson repeat the comment that he made. We're going to call on Commissioner Olson.
Do we have a thirty-five horse on the shelf that we can?
We have some smaller pumps that are on the shelves, yeah.
I thought if we're going to buy a hundred and ten horse, if we don't have a thirty-five horse, we might as well just buy one too.
I, you know, I, I can verify if there is. And if we, if we do not have one on the shelf, if you'd like, I can bring a change order number three back to purchase one of those if you'd like me to do that. But I don't believe that those are the issue.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions, Commissioners?
Just one. Where would the money come from?
Right now, the project is being paid for through capital improvement sales tax as it goes. So we would just be a change order to that project. No special assessments, but continuation of the funding of that current project.
Anyone else?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the sanitary lift station rehabilitation with the change order number two as presented by Mr. Hanson this evening for the total of one hundred and
Forty-three.
Forty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Item number six is project number thirteen forty-six, sanitary sewer access improvements. Again, the, the purpose of this discussion this evening is to approve the task order number fifty-six dash one for basic services. It is on pages two eighteen to two thirty-nine in the packet. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. On the May first commission meeting, we created this project thirteen forty-six. If you recall, there are some sanitary sewer lines that are in some rear yards, backyards where Public Works does not have access to be able to maintain these without going into these backyards. That presented, for example, if we had this, you know, three feet of snow in the backyards and say we had a collapse of a sewer or a plugged sewer, it would be very hard for the Public Works to maintain it. So this project is to install some manholes to help the Public Works. So this project is to, uh, install some manholes to help the Public Works access those sanitary sewer trunk lines. And it also, uh, prepares us for a relining project in our core area next year, uh, for our sanitary sewer mains. And we would need this, this project to happen just to access those, uh, mains anyways with it. But, um, but we wanted to do that separate and do that preemptively this year because right now we're not able to televise those areas either. So we need to televise the areas to make sure that there's no places that we need to replace and we can reline. So this also not only gives Public Works the ability to access the ma, uh, the mains, but it also, uh, allows us, uh, to be able to design properly for the next year's project. Um, so at the May first meeting, the commission, um, created the project and directed the engineer to prepare both the task order for basic services and plans and specifications. So, uh, the agenda item for tonight is we have a task order back from our consultant, uh, to do the, uh, basic services, uh, for this project, uh, as requested.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Questions, commissioners?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the task order number fifty-six dash one for basic services, excuse me. Commissioner Anderson, second of that. Uh, pages two eighteen to two thirty-nine, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, item number seven on the regular agenda is project number twenty-two sixty-five. It's the Ninth Street Northeast reconstruction, uh, improve a DCE submittal as presented. It's in pages two forty to two fifty-two in the packet. Please continue, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and commissioners. Um, we've been working with a, a consultant for the design of re, the reconstruction of Ninth Street Northeast, uh, with the funding sources that we have, uh, working through the DOT. Uh, there's a document called a documented categorical exclusion, uh, we'll call that a DCE. Uh, it's an environmental document that we need to, that has been drafted and we need to submit that to the North Dakota DOT for approval. Uh, part of that, uh, process of what we need to do tonight is there are some executive decisions that, uh, need to be made for the project, and, uh, I'd like to take you through each one of these. Uh, they're fairly straightforward, uh, so I don't think that, uh, anything should be, um, earth-shattering for this, but, uh, we can take you through the decisions that we need to make tonight, and then we would incorporate that into the DCE to be submitted to the DOT. Uh, so, uh, I've got up on the screen, uh, some of the exec, executive decisions. Uh, the first executive decision is do you concur with the project concepts as proposed? And for that, I'm gonna jump down and, let me move Mandy over here just a little bit. Um, uh, so what you see over here is, uh, an overview of the entire project, that the reconstruction of Ninth Street Northeast is from Main Avenue all the way up to Twelfth Avenue Northeast. Uh, and that will also include the reconstruction of Seventh Avenue Northeast from, uh, that intersection east to our city limits. Uh, we're also going into the city of Fargo about thirteen hundred feet, and we're working on an agreement with Fargo, uh, for them to pay their share of whatever costs that are incurred beyond our city line. So, uh, this is, the, the first step is, uh, to, um, to state, do we, do we agree with the overall, uh, concept of what we're doing here? And I just, uh, had our consultant provide a little bit more of a blow-up that we can just kind of go through and, and show you. Uh, from Main Avenue up through, uh, the BNSF railway, what we're looking at doing is taking that existing, uh, rural section, uh, roadway, and it would be a three-lane urban section roadway with curb and gutter utilities and storm sewer. Uh, and so, uh, there was traffic analysis done and in the life cycle of this roadway, that was the, uh, pavement section that was, um, design standard that was suggested by the consultant to give us a level of service that we would need. So there'll be a shared turn lane in the middle of the roadway and two outside, uh, one-way, uh, lanes as well. Um, from the railroad, uh, going up into Seventh Avenue Northeast, uh, there's the con, uh, proposed construction of a roundabout in that area. Along with this, we obviously would need to work with local landowners to be able to, uh, get some of the, um, right away that would be necessary to construct this. Um, we have, uh, had some initial, uh, conver, the consultant has had some initial conversations with some of those, uh, property owners and has not heard of any resistance from that, uh, to date. Um, the, after we do this process, that would trigger the consultant to really start the process of moving forward with, uh, gaining the access to the properties that we would need for the project. Um, on the north side of Seventh Avenue, uh, you can see there's a, and there's a better, uh, slide coming up of, uh, frontage road that fronts a lot of these businesses, uh, because right now there's approximately seven driveways that are coming into this roadway. Uh, if you can, if you can think Forty-Fifth Street in Fargo or Veterans or something like that, can you imagine having, you know, seven driveways coming in from businesses onto those roadways? It's just not an attainable situation, uh, for safety, uh, to the traveling public or for access to those businesses. So, working with the consultant, they were able to, uh, figure out a way to get, it'd be just a northbound, uh, it would only be a one-way, uh, there isn't room to get a, a, a two-way traffic on that frontage road. So that would be a northbound, uh, frontage road. And they have done all the truck turning movements to be able to verify that there would be adequate access to make the turns into the, into the, uh, businesses as shown. All the way up, uh, to Twelfth Avenue Northeast where there's an existing roundabout, and we would just be adding, uh, some pavement to the outside of that existing roundabout to be able to reach the level of tra, service that we would need for the projected traffic for this project. Um, included also in this would be some utilities that are not shown on here, but basically, we would have water main and sanitary sewer extended to all the, uh, through the corridor to the, uh, properties that are abutting it, because right now there's a lot of those businesses that are not on city sewer and water and on wells or septics and things like that. So it doesn't make sense to create this new, um, corridor without having city utilities underneath it to service the public, um, from that perspective. So the first, and, and if we could maybe, uh, just take these one at a time, as the, the first, uh, question that we have on our executive decisions is, is do you concur with the project concepts as proposed? And I'd summarize that by a, a three-lane urban section with a center turn, shared turn, uh, a roundabout in the location of the intersection of Ninth and Seventh, and the expansion of the roundabout up on Twelfth Avenue, um, intersection with it. Along with, uh, we'll have another opportunity to vote yea or nay on the frontage road later, uh, but just in concept. Uh, is there any questions on anything that I went over, uh, or is there concurrence with this?
Commissioner.
Thank you, Dan, can you go back to the picture with the frontage road? So I'm looking at this and you're mentioning all these businesses, there's only one business really there, isn't it? One owner owns all that?
Uh, no, it's, it's several different owners.
Pardon?
It's several different owners.
Well, it's all, what would it be then, there's, there's not Hazers, where are we looking at?
This is...
That's not the frontage road on the other side, I'm, yeah.
Right, the, the frontage road is just on...
Those two businesses, is there more than two businesses there?
Uh, yep, uh, this piece right here is a business not owned by the Hazers, then obviously there's the Hazers lot. And then this, these are different businesses for each one of these.
I guess that, what I'm, where I'm going with is I can picture cars sitting on that road, you know, just parked on that road. And I don't, I don't know why, I don't know why we'd want to add all that extra money to this project by adding a frontage road, when we could, you know, I mean, I guess I don't know why we'd want to do that right now with, in the future I could see it, but those businesses right there, I could see, I could see them putting cars on those roads, you know, just parking on the road for employees or what have you. And I don't think that's, uh, the intent of the road, is it? The frontage road?
No, it's not a, it's not a parking lane, it would be for a, a, access to that. Um, no, we have had multiple discussions with the property owners out there, the business owners. We have had discussions with the Hazers, and in fact, we did, uh, the Hazers do, you know, they've mentioned due to the lack of the ability to hire people, um, they're gonna start running, uh, dual tandem trucks in through there. So we actually, uh, accommodated for those turning movements with this. Um, they said that they, you know, that they're, they would be in good communication with the people that are being, doing their deliveries and things like that, because, uh, if that road is blocked, that blocks all of their commerce as well. So it, it would be advantageous to the business owners not to have that road blocked, or else it's gonna also be blocking their deliveries and things of that nature too, so. Um, and the other thing is, I would say is like, currently, right now, there's, you can see there's an existing, uh, driveway that comes out to Ninth, uh, Street Northeast right now. And currently, right now, you can even see some of the trucks parked on the other side. There's, uh, having that access open, they're, they're currently actually backing semis across Ninth Street into their parking or into their business, and we do want to prevent that, uh, that, uh, motion from happening across a major arterial collector street like this. So it not only provides us the ability to not have driveways accessing this major collector, but it also, uh, it, it forces the movements that we would like to see in that corridor as well. Um, for, and then the last thing I would say is, the, the roundabout over on Seventh, uh, basically is also acting as a U-turn for, say, there's a truck coming in that needs to go in to the Hazers property on the east side of the road. Um, there, it's a, it's a pretty tight turn for a dual tandem truck to be able to make that turn, but what they've been shown is that that truck is gonna be able to go out, go around the roundabout and then be able to turn in and access that northbound roadway. And with the existing roundabout that we have up on Twelfth Avenue, um, both sides actually, depend, depending on where the truck is coming from, acts as a, a turnaround spot for these businesses as well. So, um, having shown, uh, the business owners this plan, uh, my, I wasn't part of that meeting, but the feedback that I got was there was very favorable response from the business owners on this, on this plan.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
So I know you just said there's favorable, uh, feedback, but I guess have you heard anything, um, concerning the roundabouts, the one that's up there now on Twelfth? Is there any, has anybody complained about any issues with that or anything? Because roundabouts aren't something I'm generally a fan of, but if the businesses up there are good with it and it's gonna work well for them, then, then I suppose I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we, we've got a, uh, somebody from our consultant here, I don't, if I say something that you know of more information, please feel free to come up. But my under, my understanding is that, um, the response that we've gotten from those business owners is they really liked the roundabout and they've, they've told us that it has actually performed very well for them. Uh, we've honestly heard, uh, and normally the, the traveling public isn't, there's a lot of people out there that are not roundabout fans. Uh, however, the re, the responses that we've gotten for the Twelfth Avenue, one that exists out there, is that it actually functions really well, and the reason it functions well is because it's large. It's big enough to be able to handle it, it's not a, a smaller one that gets confused traffic. Uh, it's big enough for people to actually see, merge, uh, move around, and, um, my understanding is we've only gotten positive feedback about the existing roundabout.
So is the size of the roundabout on Seventh Avenue going to be the same size it's on Twelfth?
Correct, it's, it's basically the same size as the one on Twelfth.
Anyone else, any additional questions?
Um, Mayor?
Commissioner George?
Yeah, I'll just say, so as somebody who, when I'm in town, I'm on this road multiple times a day, um, I would just second everything Dan has said as far as, uh, normally I don't like roundabouts either, but that one on Twelfth Avenue and Ninth actually works great. Um, and, and like you said, it's because it's big. Um, and I, yeah, like if that, we have the same size on Seventh, I think it'll be good. And this project so desperately needs to be done. I'm excited, this is, you know, being proposed, and, um, yeah, I, the frontage road, I guess, you know, I'm a little bit on the fence with that, but if it's favorable response, I, great, I fully, I fully support everything.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Anybody else, additional questions?
And if I could, uh, member of the, uh, our consultant is here and has something to add to the discussion.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Lansing with Houston Engineering. Uh, thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and commissioners. Uh, just wanna back what Dan has said, um, the Seventh Avenue roundabout is designed the same size as the Twelfth Avenue. Um, we have held several public meetings with, uh, the general public as well as business owners on the corridor, and, uh, we've received a lot of positive feedback from a lot of the industries along Twelfth Avenue, uh, including Marvin. Uh, we've talked directly with them as well as multiple meetings with the Hazers and how this will operate with their facilities. And, uh, we believe that these are the correct, uh, recommendations to build for this project.
Thank you. Questions for gentlemen? So you're, you're looking for decisions on three items, is that it, Dan, on this questionnaire?
Yes, the first, the first decision we would be looking for is do you concur with the project concepts as they have been described? And I think we, it would be great if we could take each one individually.
Correct, yeah. Uh, let's go down to item number three. Uh, we don't know where the FRA grants are at?
I was gonna give an update on that. Unfortunately, we found out today, uh, that we were not successful in, uh, getting the grant for either an underpass over and over, or an overpass. Uh, Grant Forks was successful, uh, in getting some of that money with that. Uh, that was the only, uh, project awarded in the state of North Dakota, uh, underneath it. It was a federal grant, uh, so each state got their, their share. And, um, so Grant Forks had a, a good project, we were hoping that there was gonna be some additional funds that would be thrown our way, uh, for it. But again, unfortunately, we, we did not get that, so the intent would be that we would move forward with a quiet zone, uh, in that area instead. Uh, we would always have the ability, if we wanted to, to submit for this grant again and in the future. However, I don't feel that if we submit for the grant right now, that there, you know, if we've submitted this fall, we find out again next spring if it works, there's, there's no time to get that designed and incorporated into our project without a, a future change order to push that back, uh, with the amount of cost that would occur. Um, if we were to just, uh, go for those funds again and become successful at getting those funds, then we would have a brand-new constructed roadway with the quiet zone that we, we would be coming back and tearing up and putting in an overpass. Uh, I don't believe that the public would support the, it, it would be, it would have been fantastic to incorporate that into this project, uh, moving forward. We can always talk about it, but I, I probably envision that, uh, the, it, it's not going to be a standalone project for us with the other needs that we have in the city. But we did not get that funding.
Very good, thank you, Dan. Um, so, item number one is do you concur with the project concepts as proposed? Uh, entertain a motion, uh, with regarding to item number one. Commissioner Olson moves, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner George. So the motion is, is do you concur with the project concepts as proposed this evening? In favor will be yes, and nay obviously is no. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number one is, uh, a yes vote. Item number two, which alternative would you proceed with the project? Alternative A is a no-built alternative. Alternative B is a three-lane urban corridor as outlined by Mr. Hanson this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, alternative B then, as presented by Dan this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner George, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. It's been si, moved and seconded that the alternative to proceed with on this project is alternative B, three-lane urban corridor. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Dan, where's this money gonna come from?
Um, I, I did leave in the cover sheet for the packet, uh, original financial, um, discussion that I had in the first cover, or in previous packets. Um, the Ninth Street Northeast project is anticipated at the fourteen million dollar range. Uh, the West Fargo's portion of the Seventh Avenue is approximately the five million dollar range.
Oh, that part, okay.
Yep, and so we did, we do have grant of, uh, nine million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, um, for that. And then, uh, after you take that grant money off of the top, uh, the remainder, uh, we would, it, it'd still need to be determined whether that comes out of, uh, originally it was, uh, stated as it would be capital improvement sales tax, but the commission has the ability to, uh, all... has the ability to also special assess a portion of this, which is actually, part of the, the CIP would be to special assess a portion of this. What percentages of each, that hasn't been discussed as far as that goes. And I guess I should also, just for clarification purposes, when we say that we've met with the business owners and we've met with the public and things like that, these have all been design meetings, layout meetings. We have not presented costs, assessments, things like that. It's basically meetings that we've had with those owners and the public on the design parameters of what we're moving forward with. Soon, in the near future, we'll, they're, they're already under contract, the contractor is under, consultant is under contract to do the design of the project. And then I would expect that later this fall into the winter, we would start looking at the funding sources. Again, this is a 2025 project, so I would expect that next year, we would have a lot of the, the meetings as far as how are we going to pay for it. But when we first applied for the grants and we had to submit with that grant funding, how is the city going to cover their cost, their share of the project? It was stated in that document that we would be covering it through special, I'm sorry, through capital improvement sales tax and potentially special assessments.
Ready to vote on Alternative B?
All right. Any additional questions on Alternative B? All those in favor of the alternative that we do is Alternative B, signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, in the three-part executive decisions to be made, is which optional work items would proceed with the project. Costs shown for optional work items are in addition to the base costs listed for Alternative B. You've just, we just heard from Mr. Hanson that basically item number two and item number three are off the table.
That's correct.
There's no federal grant money from the railroad, the railroad grant money on that, which normally pays about eighty percent, I believe.
Yeah, that would have been eighty percent, and BNSF would have also given us another five percent.
Five percent, something like that. Okay. So, the option that Mr. Hanson is looking for is do we support, support option work item number one, the frontage road north of Seventh Avenue Northeast?
I have a quick question.
Please, Commissioner George.
When we're talking about optional items, I didn't hear this presented. I know I've brought this up a couple of times, but I just wanted to, to ask one more time as far as, is there a multi-use path associated with that project? Was that the dashed lines? And is that considered optional work on this? Or is that included kind of in the estimate price?
The, the, there is bike paths on this project, multi-use trails, and those are included in the base of it. We're, we're not.
Oh, wonderful. I'm so excited to hear this. Thank you. Okay.
Any additional questions?
Just for clarification, talking about option work item number one, the frontage road north of Seventh Avenue North, that's along Ninth Street, right?
Yeah, that is, it's a northbound one-way that begins just north of Seventh Avenue on the east side of the road, fronting all of those businesses through, through those businesses.
Going about three-quarters of the way up to Twelfth Avenue.
Correct, yep.
That's the one we just talked about.
Right. I just want to make sure that's what we were talking about. Because when it's north of Seventh Avenue, I wasn't sure if it's par, different, something we weren't, we didn't talk about paralleling Seventh Avenue.
You can see it right. It's a little bit.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Option One.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second? Commissioner George, it's been moved and seconded to approve option work item number one, the frontage road north of Seventh Avenue Northeast. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Item number eight is a carbon reduction program, CRP, grant acceptance. Mr. Hanson, again, city engineer. Purpose of this discussion and the action that is required this evening is whether to accept the CRP grant as outlined in pages two fifty-three to two hundred and seventy in the packet. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis and Commissioners. This is an exciting one for us. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act is a federal grant program for local governments to reduce carbon emissions. This money is, is, goes through MetroCog, and local governments are able to apply for it and, and present different types of projects that they would be able to use this funding for. City of West Fargo applied for grants through this program for the purchase of electrical vehicles. We're already in the, every year we replace vehicles in our fleet. So what this would do is, it would decrease the amount of carbon emissions from West Fargo by replacing some of these cars that, and vehicles that we were going to purchase as gas vehicles with the electric vehicles. This isn't an engineering department. This is more of a City of West Fargo Fleet Department discussion. Public Works and Engineering work together to apply for that grant. And the, we were happy to say that we were successful in being awarded three grants. Two of them are for the purchase of electrical vehicles. In 2024, we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars that we were going to be awarded. And in 2025, we have fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars grant awarded that Tony who purchases our vehicles, our fleet vehicles, is going to be able to use that money to, to purchase electrical vehicles. So this saves the city a, a good money as far as the purchase of the vehicles, but also in the ongoing cost of gas and maintenance and oil changes and things of that nature, it does help for that. And then in addition to that, when we first submitted for this grant, we didn't know if the, if the, we would be awarded this, these grants for purchasing electrical vehicles. So we also submitted, in case we didn't get that, we wanted to submit that we could replace some high-pressure sodium light fixtures in our street lighting with LED bulbs. And we were lucky enough to have MetroCog award us not only those two grants that I mentioned for the EVs, but they also provided a, a grant in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for us to switch out some of those older bulbs for more efficient LED bulbs. So this is a, a great cost savings to the city. Public Works was in the process of, when a light bulb goes out, replacing it with LEDs anyways. They're not the, the cheapest thing in the world, so this is going to be able to replace a, a lot of light bulbs in town. And just the amount of energy that we're going to be using and paying for to, for these streetlights is going to go way down, just do the efficiency of the LED lighting. And we did get verified that we are able to use this funds in neighborhoods. I know when we, I had met with a couple commissioners and said that it was only on the major arterials, we did get clarification from the, from the DOT, or through MetroCog and the DOT, that these funds can be used off of those major corridors into residential neighborhoods. So the direction that we would like to go with this, as far as replacing the bulbs, is that we would like our, it to be an equipment purchase, where our staff would be the ones replacing the bulbs. We'll still need a study done to get the, to get the funds. So we're, we're working and getting quotes from a consultant to do that study for us. And then instead of having it be a project that we bid out and do less lights, we'd like to purchase the lights and get permission for our staff to do it, because we do have master electricians on staff that can do this work. And then we can do a lot more lights for, get the best bang for our buck using Public Works staff doing it for it. So there is a, it is, I believe, at twenty-five percent match from the city's perspective. So again, if they're, the three hundred thousand dollar grant award that we would get for the lighting, there would be a seventy-five thousand dollar city cost. And you can see on the, on the front page that, where I put like the hundred and forty thousand for the EVs, the total expenditure would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and the city would cover the difference. But we were purchasing vehicles anyway, so it's basically an eighty percent grant, or I'm sorry, seventy-five percent grant on purchasing these vehicles. And with that, I entertain any questions?
Questions for Mr. Hanson, please. Commissioner Anderson?
On our fleet, who currently does the maintenance on the vehicles?
Public Works takes care of that.
If we get electric vehicles, will they be able to then maintain those ones as well? Or do we need to take them to a specific dealer, or have a dealer pick it up for maintenance? Or if there's issues?
I, I would have to check with Public Works on their ability to maintain that. I would, I would assume that it would need to get taken into a shop. But I've also been shocked many times, the talent that we have in Public Works to do something. So I'm assuming that we would have to take it, take it in to get maintained.
What about the charging stations? Where would they be located?
We, we still need to work on where the charging stations would be located based off of who is going to be getting the vehicles. For example, if Public Works is getting some, we would need a charging station there. The other caveat to this is that the state of North Dakota has a rule that cities cannot own charging stations. So we would be looking to partner with an Excel or somebody that provides power, that they would own the charging station. And we would still probably install it. They would own it, and we would have an agreement in place to be able to use it.
Commissioner Simmons?
I was just going to make the comment. I would assume those vehicles would have at least a three-year warranty on them. So we'd have time to, you know, figure out that. But yeah, I'm sure they do. I sure hope they do.
Oh, yeah. And the, my understanding is that the, the maintenance of electrical vehicles is software updates mostly. There's obviously tires that need to get changed. And there's different types of tires that they use. I'm not an expert on electrical vehicles, but, so I can, I can get back to you on that question if you would like me to, as far as the maintenance of.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just got, just got one other thing. I think with the charging stations and the fact that the city can't own one, and the electric vehicles, that's where I'm really kind of squirmy with this part. Like the LED lights and stuff, I think make complete sense. But for me, the electric vehicle portion doesn't make too much sense right now until we get further detail.
So let me ask this question of you, Commissioner Anderson. Would you like us to extend this till we can get some of those answers on that question?
Do we have that as an option? Do we?
Yeah, we could, I could bring this back at the meeting.
Okay. Then I would.
Are these all three grants, excuse me, Commissioner Anderson, are all three grants tied together?
They are. I'm sure we would be able to accept the three hundred thousand if we didn't accept the EVs. Those costs have been allocated. The one thing that we don't want to do is leave MetroCog in a position where they don't have people that want their money. So if, if we were to not want the EVs, this is just me talking here, I would, I would likely request MetroCog reallocate the other monies that they have allocated towards West Fargo to potentially do more streetlights into that program.
Oh, I've been in a number of the ribbon cuttings for charging stations. When Cass County Electric did it, as well as Excel Energy, you know, there's three charging stations down by the city, City Hall in Fargo, just on the west side there. So, so Commissioners, would we like to have some additional information brought forward on that, that part of it? Or make your motion, and we'll deal with it.
What, what is the, what is it that we need more information on, in here, Commissioner?
The charging.
The maintenance of, who does the maintenance on the EVs, if we have the ability?
If our staff is qualified, you know, not having worked on it. You know, they may be previous work experience, they've got experience. But, so the question that Commissioner Anderson has is basically the maintenance on electric vehicles, and then the question as to where a charging station would be. Would it be located at Public Works or at City Hall, being if it's, it's a type of vehicle that's going to be used by, you know, administrative staff, inspections, whatever. First of all, they have to transport, go all the way out there to pick up the car. So I think we need some clarification on these items.
Do we have time?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So could you bring this forward back? Commissioners, is that acceptable to all of you? That we bring this back in the, in the next meeting? Commissioner George, is that all right with you?
I'm okay with it as long as we have the time. I, I actually support this and think it's a great idea. But if, if we have the time, then I'm okay with getting Commissioner Anderson's questions answered.
Yep, that's, we do have time. I'm bringing it forward because it is something that we went for. And it was more to, hey, we just got those grants awarded. I wanted to bring it forward, make sure that the Commissioners were on board with accepting the grants and everything like that. We always have the ability to turn it down and not do it, but just wanted to, I'm not bringing it forward because I have a deadline right now. I'm bringing it forward for, for the commission to be able to see what we've done and, and move forward.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it for two weeks till our next meeting. So it's a formal motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded to table this till, for, till the next West Fargo City Commission meeting in June. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment.
Commissioner Olson?
This isn't going to swap out our entire fleet. This is probably less than a half-a-dozen cars.
I'm just making the motion because I assumed we're all on board.
Yep. I just wanted to make that clear. Just wanted to point out that we're not swapping out our entire fleet. So it's going to be a handful of cars.
About one hundred and forty thousand and fifty-three thousand.
Seven, eight cars.
Yeah, with the, with the discount that the city gets as a public entity buying, purchasing the vehicles, you can get EVs in the neighborhood, thirty-five, forty-five thousand in that range. So we're looking at probably four, five, six vehicles over the next couple of years.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? To table it for, till next commission meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Item number nine, update on the timeline for the completion of the IED Bailey audit. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, President Dardis and Commissioners, and happy to finally relieve Dan here. He's done a great job. And great job to these troopers who are patiently waiting tonight, and hope you guys are soaking it all in. Well, this particular item, you know, President Dardis, this is at your request that this has come forward. I'm going to give just a brief update, and then I will pass out a memo with a lot more detailed information. But I figured I'd be brief here to get to the questions and, and open dialogue. We are currently working on the audit. We, you know, every year around springtime, we start preparing all the paperwork, the reports, and getting everything in order so that the audit can, can proceed. This is a, a financial audit done for the city. IED Bailey, over the past several years, has been conducting those audits. So we are working closely with them to understand what all the paperwork they need to get started. I will say that, you know, there's a small portion that they can start now in terms of reviewing some of the reports and, and work papers. But they're going to wait to do the bulk of that work until our new finance director starts June nineteenth. The bulk of the audit work really takes place when they come on site and go through everything. That takes a lot of coordination with staff. And so they are going to wait until Ms. Heidi Delorme is on board, and in fact, probably has a couple, two, three weeks of, of getting acclimated. So I anticipate the bulk of the audit work will, will take place in July. Thankfully for us, you know, without AE2S Nexus and our, our previous director, Judy Oftal, all the paperwork wouldn't be getting done. We wouldn't have the staff in place to do that. So we are blessed to have someone as qualified as Judy Oftal helping us, and of course, AE2S Nexus with the work they're doing. The deadline for us that we're, that we're focused on is based on the single audit deadline of September thirtieth. So with the bulk of the work being done in July, I anticipate that we would be done in time to comply with the state regulations there. So again, I do have a memo here I'll pass out, but otherwise we'd be open for, for questions.
Questions, Commissioners? Being Commissioner George is out of town, would you certainly send that electronically to her, too?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else with regard to that, Dustin?
No.
City Administrators Report.
Okay, thanks again, President Dardis and members of the Commission. So, one thing I want to focus on here is a staffing update. As I mentioned, Ms. Heidi Delorme is starting on June 19th as our new Finance Director. I do want to say that she has started on a temporary, a part-time basis this week to help, actually she started on May 30th on a part-time basis to primarily help with the hiring of additional staff. We've had the Senior Accountant position open for some time, and so when we did conduct interviews and she accepted the position, there was some discussion with that interview committee that she would be willing to help out on her own time to look at job applications and even be involved with interviews. I thought it would be best if she were at least a part-time employee, so that the, the input she's giving us is as an employee versus someone just helping on their own free time. So, May 30th, she did start on a part-time basis. At this point, that's all she's been helping with, it's just been, she reviewed senior applicant, or applications for Senior Accountant, and this week we are conducting interviews. So, moving on, any questions on that before I move on? Okay. Library Director, we've been narrowing candidates, I've been in touch with the Library Board Director on some finalists, and I believe the Library Board Director, as well as Commissioner Mandy George, and a couple others will be involved with the interview process. I believe those are going to be scheduled for either next week or the week after. So, it's in progress. Hopefully by the end of June, we can have a new Library Director in place. Any, any questions on Library Director? Okay. And last, I do want to talk about a temporary reorganization of city departments. Over the past month, I have been able to talk with each of the Commissioners about a temporary reorganization. This is largely, in my opinion, in the best interest of the city, to wait until a new Administrator is on board to help with the efforts in developing a plan moving forward, and long-term staffing needs and structure, and, and working with the City Commission to do so. Until that time, I am going to be proposing to move Communications, Human Resources, and IT Departments under administration. That will, of course, come with some additional staffing changes. For example, instead of hiring a Director to, to fill those roles, that will wait, again, until a new Administrator is on board. For now, Communications, I'm proposing to, right now, the, the two Communication Specialists have basically split up the work amongst the city, proposing to move forward with Communication Managers so that, you know, they have a higher level of responsibility and to carry out not only the day-to, the day-to-days, but also the, the needs of, of those services. So, Human Resources, same thing, instead of hiring a new Director, at this point, I would want to pivot and modify that job into a HR Manager. It's essentially the same responsibilities, but underneath the administrative wing, so it, of course, is, the job description will, will change. That has been sent to a third, our third-party vendor who evaluates our job descriptions, and so, working to get that out there with the current applicant pool. And to that point, we did have fifteen applicants, and I've narrowed down to four candidates that I want to discuss this, this change from HR Director to HR Manager with, so we'll be having those conversations this week. And the third change, again, IT. Right now, our IT Manager has been really overseeing the day-to-day operations, as well as supervising staff, and I'm just proposing to continue with that structure. I think it's been going well. And again, I, I would prefer to wait until a new Administrator is on board to help guide with those long-term staffing needs, so. With that, that's again, an overview. I do have a little more detailed memorandum here for, for the Commission to, to review as well. With that, I would answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Scott. Commissioner Simmons.
Dustin, I just want to make the comment, you've really picked up moving forward here in the last couple of months, and it's totally awesome to see you do this and, and make these changes that, that probably should be made, definitely. And I realize, you know, a new Director will maybe, hopefully won't go on a different path, but I think you're, you're going down the right road, and you're doing a great job, and, and all the staff as well is picking up the pace, so I think I really appreciate, I think the whole Commission appreciates what you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Are you looking for an actionable item on this, Dustin, for, with regard to these Director versus, you know, the, the changes that you're suggesting? You, do you want to commission action on that, or?
I, I certainly wouldn't mind the, the show of support. At this point, I'm willing to take any, any comments, and, and if I need to come back with a revised plan, I can certainly do so. I didn't intend on specific action, but that said, it, it would certainly be worthwhile to get some formal support moving forward, so that if there is anything in the coming months, it's best to reflect back on, on this particular day.
Commissioners?
I'd make a motion.
Do we have a consensus, or go ahead, Commissioner? My apologies.
Nope, nope. I'll make a motion to support what Dustin was doing, Dustin Scott.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, and a second by Commissioner George, that this realignment that he's presented this evening, moving forward till a new City Administrator is hired. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Anderson.
I just want to confirm here that I heard correct, is, under Communications, is it Manager or Managers? Are we talking singular or plural?
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. A good question. So currently, the Department had a Communications Director and two Communication Specialists, and those Specialists were really kind of taking half of the, the city's needs and, and sharing those responsibilities. So what I'm proposing is to have two Communication Managers, one Communication Manager very specific to public safety services, the other one specific to administration and other departmental services.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Additional questions? Discussion? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything additional? Thank you.
That's all I have for the.
All right. In our correspondence this evening, we did have a third item with regard to, he registered through public comment, but it was determined that he did want it for correspondence. That comment was by Mr. Paul Bishop of 550, 5, 5501, Eleventh Street West in West Fargo. His comments will be forwarded to the appropriate Department with regard to what his questions are. With regard to the other two gentlemen that spoke earlier in public comment, I noticed that numerous Commissioners were making notes on their discussions, and we will be reviewing those comments and what action the City Commission might be considering. Commissioners, do we have, any of you have anything on a non-agenda item that you'd like to bring forward this evening? Does any Department Head have any non-agenda item you'd like to bring forward this evening? So the young men that are here from Troop 246 are probably going to get a merit badge for their participation with regard to city government and the likes, and they should also be given one for patience. So, to the young women, young men and young women that are in the crowd this evening, thank you for joining us, it's an honor and privilege. Thank you for being a scout, and thank you for the service that you do for our community. Commissioner Simmons.
Move to adjourn.
Commissioner Olson.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.